It is 6:30 PM on Monday, November 27th, and we are calling the special city council meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Councilmember Kelly, would you mind leading us in the pledges?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'm honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Councilmember Torrey, would you lead the indication?
Yes, I would. Please stand or remain standing, and let's take a moment for contemplation and reflection of anything that's on your mind. Thank you.
All right. Item one, regular session. Consideration of approval of lease number D A C W six three dash one dash two three dash zero six seven four with the United States Army Corps of Engineers for the Lewisville Lake Environmental Learning Area and authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute all related documents. In August of 2022, the City of Lewisville Independent School District and the University of North Texas each sent USACE a letter requesting a renewal of lease number D A C W six three dash one dash nine eight dash zero five five five, which was set to expire in September of that year. After reviewing the request and conducting a follow-up inspection of the site, USACE issued a new lease and sent a copy to each entity for execution. There are no substantial changes from the prior lease. The term of the proposed lease is 25 years. Both L I S D and U N T have executed the lease. It is recommended that the city council approve the lease agreement and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute all related documents as set forth in the caption above. City Secretary, do we have any speakers available? All right. You have any other public comment? Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the lease agreement and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute all related documents as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item two, public input and discussion on potential short-term rental regulations. Staff is going to present a proposed short-term rental regulation, and we are seeking public input and council discussion on said regulations, and it's recommended that the city council conduct this public input session and discussion as set forth in the caption. Our city manager, Claire Powell, has a brief PowerPoint presentation to give, and then we will open for public input.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris McGinn is gonna progress all the slides for me. He will be my Vanna White tonight. I'm gonna get it later. All right, Mayor and Council, tonight we are pleased to propose a set of regulatory rules related to the regulation of short-term rentals. The first thing to note is that the regulations we are proposing are going to include this definition. This is important because right now, single-family does not have a durational requirement on it in our current ordinance, and therefore it is necessary for us to further define this to have the regulations be applicable to short-term rentals. So, "short-term rental unit shall mean any dwelling unit or portion thereof offered to the transient public for compensation for a period of less than thirty consecutive days." And then it says what it is not, which is hotel motel in bed breakfast, et cetera. Next. So, this is actually a different slide than what is in your backup. We updated it with brand-new numbers today. So, this is basically showing you that we currently have ninety unique currently advertised STRs in Lewisville. In July of 2023, we had ninety-three that were identified. They've actually gone down. Obviously, with short-term rentals, they can come and go off of these platforms, and so this right now, our current numbers are ninety. You do see that private rooms did increase if you had the numbers from before slightly. There are four new possible STR homes found in the last thirty days, but that still was a decrease overall. Go ahead. This is just updating the maps to show where they are currently. It didn't change substantially in the slide from before, but it is showing you the current map of STR locations. I think it's important to note that your STRs aren't located in one area. They are spread throughout our community. And this is showing, this is the exact same slide before. I wanted to just make sure this was included in this presentation as well. So, fifty percent, six percent of the owners of STRs live in Lewisville, and four percent of the owners live outside of Texas. We weren't able to run this again in the short time that we had to pull this together, but this slide does reflect from July 2023. All right, so this is a survey I thought was important, counsel, for you to see and also for the public to see, because I think there's been a lot of comments made about that the law allows us to do certain things. And what this is showing is, especially with all the pending lawsuits, is the law's not really been settled. So, you have a lot of cities that are doing operating rules, and those do not seem to be litigated as much as the ones that are having zoning rules. And zoning rules are those that are saying you can't have them at all in single-family or not allowing certain districts or having a total ban. You'll see in most of those, like Dallas, Fort Worth, Grapevine, that you end up with pending litigation. It is also important because we've heard a lot of comments about the Arlington litigation and Arlington ordinance. There wasn't actually a final determination on that Arlington ordinance. It was non-suited, so there's not really a final decision on those zoning regulations. We do have Austin, which does have applicable case law out there where the city did lose both lawsuits. There is a possible appeal pending. But the other thing to note is there are some cities that have total bans or zoning regulations, and they just haven't been sued at all. So, it's just, you know, it just realizes that can go either way. Obviously, the larger cities have been pulling those litigation. Next. So, these are our proposed regulations. Really, we were trying to find something that was right-sized for our community. Obviously, this is a proposal for counsel. At the end of the day, or end of this meeting, after we get public input, counsel has several options that they can go. One direction might be that they want, you guys want us to explore more options. The other one would be to tell us if your sentiment is that you like the way this is packaged and want us to move forward. But go to the next slide, Chris. Thank you. The first thing of our proposed regulations is to have a temporary ban on new short-term rentals. Now, in the prior slide that had a survey, City of Plano had done the exact same thing. And so, what we're saying is to have one, allow one year to allow further study to determine if the proposed operational regulations that we're setting forth meet the community needs and address problem properties. This would not prevent the operation of existing short-term rentals, so if they're operating today, they would continue operating. Of course, they would have to follow our operational rules. But this would put a pause on future short-term rentals in Lewisville, and we would bring this back in a year to determine if, you know, these operational regulations are working well or not, but it allows us to study them further. Next. So, we would require a permit to operate or advertise any short-term rental. The permit would be issued per property and non-transferable. So, if one of a short-term rental owners decide that they want to sell their property, the new owner would not be able to operate a short-term rental under their existing permit, the prior owner's permit. They would have to apply for a new one. Each property would be assigned a permit number, and the occupancy would be limited based on the International Property Maintenance Code. I think it's important to note that the International Property Maintenance Code is already a code that exists and is applicable to all properties today, not just short-term rentals, all homes. So, if there are issues out there that we're not aware of, they can be brought to our attention, but that is applicable today. Permit expires one year after the date of issuance, which means owners have to come in year after year, and city has the ability to revoke the permit under certain circumstances. This is really intended, these regulations are intended to address problem properties. So, we, the information that was provided in prior meetings was that there were some properties that people didn't have issues with, but there's some that were bad actors, and this allows us to try to be more exacting in our regulations. An STR permit can only be issued if there's a complete application. The owner pays the application fee, and I will tell you, the application fee is still in the works right now. With all fees, we seek to recover our costs of basically providing the services, and so we are talking right now with third parties that are going to help us administer this program. My expectation, it would be anywhere between $300 to $500. The STR owner has to be up-to-date on payment of all taxes, so that is their real property taxes, really anything, but also hotel occupancy tax. I will mention, though, that this is not going to be, it will not be retroactive, so we're looking to make sure you're up-to-date going forward from the date of this adoption. And the property has to pass an inspection, so that means we will have an inspector go to every one of these houses before they get a permit, and they will make, we will make sure that they meet all local, state, and federal laws in that inspection before we grant the permit. Go ahead, Chris. So, one of the things we heard was that it was the responsiveness of property owners. So, the owner must identify a property manager that can be responsive to immediate concerns and complaints and be on-site within one hour if requested by city staff. So, if a police officer is on the property, is having an issue, they will need, and they call the property manager and need the property manager to show up, they would need to be there within an hour. They also must be reachable by phone within fifteen minutes. So, this really is ensuring that your property manager is responsive and responsible. You must have at least two ninety-six gallon trash carts and one recycling. This was intended to address issues that were brought up related to trash being set out and strewn about in the neighborhood. Please note that every house is responsible for making sure their trash is put out on the correct day. This is really just an extra restriction to ensure that if you're having lots of guests and lots of trash that builds up, that it's being more proactive. But regardless, if they, even if the STR owner, their tenants end up having more trash than that, and it becomes a problem on the property, that can also be a violation. You would not, they would not be allowed to advise guests to park in a way that violates state or city law, and we'll go more into options for parking later. And they must maintain insurance of one million per occurrence. This is to protect neighboring properties in case of disaster on the property and anything that may happen during the use of the property as a STR. Inside the property, the owner must have a conspicuous location for the owner's name, property manager's name, information brochure. So, that's important just from a making sure that the people that are staying there understand city ordinances, know what the rules are for parking, trash, and noise, and then have emergency contact information and non-emergency information. And then again, limit occupancy to the amount allowed by the International Property Maintenance Code. Next. So, this is rules on advertising. We are suggesting that all ads, and this basically says everything, that is any type of advertisement on any type of medium, is an advertisement, and that has to show your city-issued permit. It must state that the property cannot be used as a party venue, and you must list your occupancy, the not-to-exceed established by the International Property Maintenance Code. Next. So, this gives you a breakdown of what that International Property Maintenance Code requires. So, basically, it's a calculation. If, for one bedroom, you, a minimum square foot per bedroom is seventy square feet, but if you have more than one person in a bedroom, you have to add, basically have fifty square feet per person. This regulation is already in place. So, those are your, I'm not going to go through those, but that's the space required by the IPMC for each number of bedrooms and the square footage, I'm sorry, number of occupants per square footage. So, we ran some hypotheticals, and these are related to, we took the addresses off, but these were short-term rentals in our community. And basically, what we did is we tried to estimate what the bedrooms were based on looking at it. So, this is not, you know, we would have to get the actual measurements of those bedrooms. But for a 2,292-square-foot home, these were listed on Airbnb with five bedrooms. On this particular one, when we looked at it, there is a room that is not a legal room. It does not meet the definition of a sleeping room, and it can't be used as such. So, we did not count that. So, then you have all the other bedrooms, the calculations. As you can see, Airbnb, they listed as sixteen plus. Under the IPMC, only eight would be allowed to stay there. The next one, example two, this is a much larger house. This is 3,756 square feet. Those are the calculations. All of those look to be appropriate bedrooms. And then they list at fourteen, and this is thirteen under the IPMC. Another home example, 2,776 square feet. As you can see, sixteen on Airbnb, but ten required by the IPMC. Again, it's really, and it actually could be more, but we couldn't verify bedroom five. And then on this one, you can see the square footage. It's Airbnb is twelve, and IPMC requires eight. Okay. So, an STR permit will be granted as long as you meet all these code requirements, and you've you submit a permit application, but then you can, we can revoke that permit. And so that's revoked if you provide false information or misleading information, if there's an attempt to transfer that permit or use a transferred permit, and then if there's three convictions. So those three convictions, and that's not, you know, those aren't tickets, but those are actual convictions. You have to go to municipal court and get a conviction there. It's if there's any convictions on the premises, so three. That means it doesn't necessarily have to be the responsibility of the own, like, it doesn't have to be the owner that received the ticket. It can be one of the tenants, but if it is tied to some activity on that property, the ticket would go against that property and could lead to the, to the, if there's three convictions, lead to the revocation. There is an exception to that. A conviction for an offense which was reported to law enforcement by the owner would not be included in that count because obviously, we want the owner to be responsible and call in if there's an issue. A short-term rental owner is going to receive notice so that if there is some type of way to cure any of those issues, and then they would have 10 days to cure, but if it's, you know, those three convictions, those are not curable. If the permit is revoked, the short-term rental owner is not able to be issued another one for one year. The intent is to, the majority of our, the hope is that the majority of our short-term rental owners and operators are good owners and operators, and this will never become an issue for them, but that the ones that continue to have issues will, you know, potentially at least be held responsible. They also deserve due process, so there is an appeal process that we would bake into this ordinance. So the owners would have 10 business days from the date of denial or revocation to submit a written appeal to the city, and I would hear the appeal and provide the written decision. So here's an optional tool that would be provided, not just for short-term rental situations, but for anyone throughout the city if there's a parking issue in their, in their neighborhood. So what this is, is to create a limited parking zone, and what it would do is limit on-street parking only. So you can park in your driveway, you can park in your garage. That's not limited, obviously, by any means. This is just for on-street parking. And you would petition the city for the creation of it, but it would have to be the length of one city block and it would include both sides of the street. And then 75% of those dwelling units on that block would have to sign the petition to be considered. One owner signature per dwelling unit. So if you have two owners in a house, only one is per, one signature or one vote per house, basically. And then no parking would be allowed on the approved block once this is established without a valid permit. So that means it applies not just to short-term rental operators and tenants, but it also applies to the owners on that property, on that street. But owners would get three owner parking permits and two vendor parking permits. So if you have a housekeeper or a, you know, lawn service that comes, those vendors that come regularly, you could provide them those parking permits. And remember, that would not limit on, you know, your property parking. So you could technically, like in my home, I could park two cars in my garage, two cars in my driveway, and then I would have three more vehicles on the street. Temporary parking permits, unlimited amounts, are for guests, can be requested more than 24 hours in advance. And they're only good for 72 hours, but you must request in person at City Hall.
So just to get this over, if they're having a shower, a birthday party, any sort of reception, they need to plan ahead as a homeowner or short-term rental owner, or they can be cited.
That's right. So if you're, if you're parking on the street in violation of this, you would be ticketed, and your guests could be ticketed as well.
But that is only if that street by majority votes it in.
Yes. Okay. Okay. So next steps, that's the conclusion of the proposed regulatory plan. Like I said before, next steps are to hear public input on this, and then Council just really want to see what your sentiments are after hearing that input, if the desire is for us to go back to the drawing board, for us to explore one or two aspects of what, of some of the comments, or to move forward as presented. Our timeframe, we would like to, if Council's on board with this, is to bring something sometime in January. The ban would be effective immediately upon adoption. I will say, though, that the regulatory rules, we would need to get contracts in place with third-party providers. We would need to have processes that we get fine-tuned. We'd have to get forms created. I would say, you know, three months max to be able to get those going, but I wanted to make sure Council understood that we needed a little bit of ramp-up time to get this done effectively so that we're not, we don't botch this right off the bat. We want to do a good job. So with that, I will hand it back to you, Mayor.
All right. So Council, I think the way we're going to work through this is I'm going to go through ecomments. Then I have a group of folks who do not wish to speak on the item, but they have expressed or haven't expressed an opinion on the card, so I may ask those folks from the audience if they could clarify something. You don't have to come up front if you don't want to, but I may need some clarification on your, on your statements here just because I might be a little confused. Then we will go through the folks who have requested to appear before Council and present. Once we've gone through those, then I anticipate Council will have questions or direction, and we'll have that discussion. Any, any questions about the process? All right. So first up, I have a single e-comment. This was sent to all of Council and it is in the documents, but it was from Song Wu, and they wanted to basically make sure that the IPMC applies to all dwellings because constitutionally, we can't discriminate against certain properties, and that is absolutely correct. All right. Next, I have several requests, and these are folks who do not wish to speak but were available for questions. So I do have a couple of things that I may ask. Mr. Scott Harris. Mr. Harris, you didn't mark whether you were in support or opposition. Would you mind telling me if?
I'm in opposition.
Opposition to the proposed regulation. Okay. And, and Mr. Harris, would you mind telling me if you, if you own an STR or are a neighbor to one? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harris, are, what part of the ordinance are you opposed to, or are you just opposed to it in?
I'm just opposed in general.
And Mr. Mayor, if we may, Mr. Harris, if we can get you on the microphone, that would be better for the audio quality. Thank you very much.
Sorry about, sorry about that, Mr. Harris. And Mr. Harris lives Piedmont Drive in Louisville, Texas.
So I guess for us, it's more a matter of having people in the neighborhood that we don't know, even if it's on a short-term basis. You know, we have a, in our neighborhood, it's pretty tight-knit. We know who all our neighbors are, what's going on, and those sort of things, but having someone in and out of the neighborhood, just not real comfortable with that happening on a regular basis.
Okay. So, okay, that completely changed my thought process. So you are opposed to short-term rentals?
Yes.
It's not, you're not opposed to the ordinances and the policies?
Correct. The overall short-term rental in general is what we're not in support of.
Okay. Got it. Got it. Awesome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you clarifying that for us.
Sure.
And thank you for taking the time to come out.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Ms. Anna Harris, I have that you are in opposition, are you in opposition to the ordinance or opposition to STRs?
I'm in opposition to STRs. We have like three within probably five houses from us, and it's just the parking, people are parking.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Harris, if you could come to the podium.
Yeah, I guess, I thought that was going to be quicker, but I guess that's not going to work. So my apologies. Piedmont Drive as well.
Yes. I am opposed just to the short-term rentals because we have within five houses of us from the back of our alley and down to the corner. There's like three of them that I know of, and they park in the alley, they park all over the place. There is one house on the corner that has parties all the time, and so I'm just kind of opposed of it being in our neighborhood for children being outside playing and stuff like that in our neighborhood, kids being safe.
Super. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback and for you taking the time. Christina Opel, or Opal, my apologies if I got that wrong.
Yes.
And if you couldn't, if you wouldn't mind telling me, are you in support of the ordinances or are you against STRs? Can you give me the context?
Support.
Of the ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Opel, I'm assuming the same thing?
Yes.
And that's Bridgewater Place in Flower Mountain for both of those.
In Flower Mountain?
Samantha Quero, my apologies, Samantha. You still here? There you are. You are in opposition of the regulation or in opposition to STRs?
Of STRs.
Thank you.
Mayor, what was that last name again?
C U E T O. Queto.
Thank you.
And that's Cedar Ridge Drive. Ms. Becky Kerbo, she supports the proposed guidelines to govern STRs. She's Cedar View Court, Louisville. I'm sorry. Clearview. Thank you, Becky. Ms. Debbie Hunt, Clearview Court, opposition to STRs, in support of the regulation, some different version? So in support, in support of the regulations, you don't like STRs?
No, I don't like them.
Okay. Thank you.
But I have a question.
If you have a question, we're going to have to have you come on up. I'm sorry.
It's a quick one. I want to understand the parking problem. You're saying if we want to hold them accountable for parking on the road, they have to get everybody to, 75% of the neighborhood to sign on that?
As, as outlined by the city manager, the proposed solution for dealing with parking would require the neighborhood, so one city block, so that's a, that's a discreet space, 75% of the homes on that city block would have to say, yes, we want parking permits on our neighborhood.
But what if we say we don't want them? So like, if 75% say they don't want them and they park, then we can call and they're...
You would, you would be under the current city ordinances for parking. They could park anywhere they wanted at any quantity.
Really?
Yes, ma'am. Just like you can do today.
But they, they have to move it every 24 hours?
Correct.
Forty-eight?
So it's 48. That's right.
Oh, 48?
Yeah.
And did you get the numbers to call when we need, like, if the parking is 48 hours and they don't move it? What number do we call?
You can call the Police Non-Emergency Helpline for that one, which is our 3600-219...
21, uh, not...
214-219.
No, 972-219.
972-219, 3600. Yeah. It's on speed dial anymore. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
972-219-3640.
3640. Okay. But yeah, and so the other way to find that, so if you didn't write it down, just go to the city website and type in Police Non-Emergency.
Okay.
And it'll pop right up.
All right. One more thing. If you're gonna, I just hate them, but if, because we have three on our road. If you're gonna charge them like hotel taxes and all of that stuff, but they're in a single-family home residential area, how does that work? Because then that makes them sort of a hotel.
City manager?
So we actually have to amend our hotel occupancy tax code provision and add short-term rentals to that.
All right. Good. Thank you. Yeah, charge them.
Thank you for the questions. Appreciate it.
Mayor, that was, that was Ms. Hunt. Is that correct?
That was Ms. Hunt, yes.
And what was the street?
Clearview.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And we have Diana Pham, Wellesley Drive here in Louisville, does not wish to speak, but are you in support of the ordinance, in support of STRs?
Support of STRs.
Support of STRs. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor. You probably said it, but what was that street again?
That was Wellesley Drive. And Ms. Pham, you're, are you an STR owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the address of the STR or the address of the residence?
Of residence.
Residence. Thank you.
And where, where's Wellesley at?
Wellesley Drive in Louisville?
Oh.
All right. So those are all of the folks who did not went to speak, but want to speak, but we got you to speak anyway. So first of all, thank you. I appreciate that. I know it's always a challenge to come to something like this and talk in front of the public. You know, it's something that not everybody likes to do, but it's important and we need the feedback, so I greatly appreciate you all doing that. And now, we also have the folks who did wish to come speak, so I would ask you all, if you would, please make sure that your comments are professional, that they're addressed to me. If you will, we will ask questions. I'm sure Council has that opportunity and prerogative, but again, we're all here just trying to figure out how to make the neighborhood better for everybody. And so let's, let's approach that with a, an attitude of grace. Sometimes we see things on the media and represent the worst of us, not the best of us. So I appreciate everybody coming out here and having these conversations because I know it can be challenging. So first up on the list, we have Jana Belcher, Belch, Beckner, B-C-K. There we go. And this is 1384 Colby Drive in Louisville?
Yes, and thank you for having me. I don't like talking in front of people either, by the way, but I felt like I needed to come down and say something. And I'd written out a lot, but I'm not going to read that because I think a lot of what I had to say has already been mentioned before. But I was one of the ones, when I first came, the last meeting, I was just in shock. I'd never heard of anything like this before. And you don't know that it's happening to you until it happens in your backyard. And when this happened behind my house, I was, I was just shocked. And the only thing, I've read that it's issues in many, many cities right now. I know that everybody's kind of going through the same thing. And I can only assume it's because both homeowners buying into single-family and cities alike wouldn't have foreseen a need to have something in writing because single-family, to me, is transparent in its meaning, you know, to most of us. Doesn't mean hotels and multiple, you know, people living there. I noted in reading through the proposed regulations that most of the owners of the STRs live in are around Louisville, and 4% live in, you know, out of Texas or whatnot. But the person that owns mine lives in Flower Mountain, so he's not too far away. But are these people who own these STRs, are they buying them next door to their house so they can regulate them, make sure that there's no trash, make sure that everything's, you know, good? No, they're not. They're not living next to them. They're buying in neighborhoods so that the neighbors have to watch what's going on. And I'm tired of feeling like I have to regulate what's happening at my neighbor's home. It's not my business. Why, you know, why do I have to, that's just my feeling. It's, it's scary to me to have this many different people come in and out, and we live on kind of, I'm next to the house, next to the corner, so they're parking all the way around. And then to add insult to injury, we've got a house right there across the street from me in the front that has one of those where you can sign up and come swim at their house, and they'll have, God knows how many cars. You know, you just can't park. You can't do anything. And then you've got strangers running around your neighborhood. So, so that, that's definitely a problem that I can see, too. And based on the International Property Maintenance Code, I believe you called it, the new proposal that I read, or that proposal that I read, it does limit the number of people that the one behind my house can have. It limits it from 20 down to 12, I believe, from, based on the calculations I could get of square footage because they converted their garage, et cetera. So that's going to help with the number of strangers that can come in my neighborhood from like a possible up to 7,300, which is probably out there, you know, based on 20, down to 4,300 a year. That's still a lot of strangers roaming through my neighborhood. You know, I have concern, I don't have children at home anymore, but I have five grandkids who come over, and it scares me to think of all these strangers running around, you know, the neighborhood. The limited parking zone application, it's, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I understand we're just trying to find a solution, but it's kind of insulting to the people who live on that block. I mean, you're basically asking to penalize us for one house, you know, and that's only because we don't like the number of cars being parked in front of our mailboxes, you being parked in front of our mailboxes, you know, in our alley, you know, along our streets. I think there's just something better that can be done there, because I can't think of any of our neighbors that would actually sign something like that. We know each other. I've been there thirteen years, I know my neighbors. You know, so that's not an issue there. I just think that the people who own the STRs should have permits for limited parking. You know, they should have to do that, because this is different people coming in and out and not the people who live there all the time. And I was shocked to see the growth of the short-term rental. I thought that was appalling. I just couldn't believe in three short years, how many we, you know, have added to the city. So quite frankly, I guess as you can tell, I'm in a complete, completely against and would like to have a ban of short-term rentals in areas zoned for single-family, not in Lewisville in general. I know there's other zoning that other cities have that, you know, they can have short-term rentals in. And I don't know what the solution is. If it were me, I would say, yes, you let them know, we can't have them here anymore, and here's where you can have them, so that they have the opportunity to sell those homes and repurchase where it's, you know, in regulation. But I appreciate you taking time to listen to my view.
Great, thank you, Ms. Beckner.
I, that brought up a couple of questions from you real quick. So, city manager, is the pool rental, we've heard about this before, is there already, is that already not a legal activity? People go out and rent their pools or fractions of their house?
You know, I don't know if Chris has an answer to that. Do you? You may not. I know our focus has been on short-term rentals, not that specifically at this point.
I think currently, there are about five that show up on Swimly, which is the internet site. Some cities have looked at regulation, but I don't know of anything concrete.
Okay, thank you. And then Chief, is parking in front of a mailbox, is that already a ticketable offense? I know you won't get your mail, but I didn't know if that's a citable offense or not.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, because I kind of glossed over this on the parking, so it does say you cannot park in any place that's an illegal parking, so... Same thing, if one of their tenants did park in front of a mailbox, that ticket would go towards that property.
All right. Next up, we have Mr. Jeff Woods. Forest Park Drive in Lewisville.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. You know, just in the few people who have spoken here tonight, there's been a common concern, and that common concern has been safety. That comes from adults, that also comes from strangers being in and out of the houses that are next to us with children involved as well. In recent months, we have brought countless reports, data, statistics, proving negative effects of short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods, not to mention our own personal stories and experiences, like you heard tonight. Of all the council meetings I have attended and all the research that I have undertaken, I have yet to hear one positive fact, data, or statistics about how short-term rentals improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods, not one. Not one. Why? Likely because this data doesn't exist. So my question would be, when preparing a proposal, don't we compare positive data and reports for banning short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods and the positive factors and data of having short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods? If this is the case, then the data speaks for itself. Neighborhood cohesion is detrimental to our quality of life. Mayor Gilmore, at the recent quarterly update, November the second, twenty-twenty-three, you were cited as saying, "The biggest, best way we can make sure that Lewisville is safe and a prosperous city is to get out and to know our neighbors, because crime does not thrive in a community that knows its neighbors." I firmly agree with you on that, and I think everyone will find this interesting study that was done by UT researchers recently. They published a study that stated neighborhood trust during childhood contributes to better cognitive health later in life. This was on October the second of twenty-twenty-three. And it said, "New work from UT researchers found that childhood neighborhood cohesion, the amount of trust and belonging to a person feels in their community impacts cognitive health later in life." She found more positive neighborhood cohesion during childhood correlated with better cognitive health in late midlife and older adulthood. Neighborhood cohesion refers to the extent to which people feel that they belong in the place that they live, that they feel like they can trust their neighbors and that there's somebody around to provide support to them in their neighborhood. She does bring up in her paper that living in a more cohesive neighborhoods could promote more health behaviors, better health behaviors. It can make individuals more comfortable in their neighborhood and promotes behaviors like exercise or social interaction, all things that we know relate to cognitive functioning later in life. It shows that it's important to look beyond just individual-level health and risk factors. It emphasizes the importance of looking at neighborhood environments in childhood as well as intervening earlier in the life course when looking at cognitive health outcomes later in life. You know, this reminds me of the childhood parental warning stranger danger that we also received in school. When you see a stranger, we would go to somebody's house that we knew, a neighborhood house that we knew. Without banning short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods, we are exposing our children to stranger danger week in and week out, and we are robbing our children and adults alike from experiencing the neighborhood cohesion safety that they are deserved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Gary Ferguson, eleven-eleven Firewater Circle, Lewisville, Texas.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. City Council and staff, thank you for your attention to the problem of short-term rentals in our neighborhoods and the hard work done getting to these initial proposed ordinances. We especially want to thank the city staff for the excellent research and the work done to identify unique solutions that other cities may not have identified. For example, the IPMC. It's great work, thank you. Short-term rentals are not good for single-family neighborhoods, but with a set of guidelines in place, we can at least hope to see an improvement over time. I'd like to address a few aspects of the proposed ordinance. The IPMC, Property Maintenance Code, is great research, great job. We have, we have a point out that Arlington's successfully defended ordinance allows no more than two per bedroom. There should be a fallback option if IPMC becomes difficult to enforce or is rejected by the opposition. Taxes and grandfathering. Grandfathering of legitimate STRs that follow the law with no violations and have been paying H O T taxes may be an acceptable interim solution. Convictions. The proposed ordinance proposes convictions for violations, but needs more details. Experience from other cities like Nashville, where shooting incidents occurred, shows that convictions are the wrong trigger to deal with STR violations and do not provide relief to the neighborhood. Judicial processes, including appeals to the high courts resulting lengthy, drawn-out, and indeed multi-year processes. This is a burden on the courts, city, neighbors, and STR owners. Arlington's successful ordinance requires that two verified violations occur that occur within a twelve-month period in order for the city to revoke an STR permit. The appeal for revocation of a permit can be done through an administrative arbitration process at the city manager's office. Austin also has similar terms as Arlington has. Additional points. The addition of the immediate suspension of STR permits if an egregious violation occurs, it is not fair to neighbors or public interest to wait for three crimes to occur before it is revoked. Convictions also require extensive evidence. Evidence creates even more problems for already negatively impacted victims of short-term rental accesses, as I experienced in the past week. In addition, platform accountability. Recommendations do not include platform accountability. Platform accountability is a growing trend in the STR industry. It is likely that short-term rental platforms will become more responsible and accountable stakeholders in the STR market if platform accountability is included in Lewisville proposals. For example, Austin requires STR platforms to verify that short-term rentals have obtained the necessary permits and licenses before operation. Here are some of the benefits of platform accountability. Reduces the enforcement burden on the city. Ensures that STRs are operating in compliance with regulations. Holds platforms accountable for their role in the STR market. Increases transparency and accountability in the STR market. Again, as mentioned before, know your neighbor is a very important part of feeling secure, safe. Maslow's hierarchy of needs stresses the basics, and fundamentally, short-term rentals destroy those very essential basics of your environment. I'd like to also say that if anybody needs to... Quick access to the police emergency, non-emergency code is available at tnclewisville.org as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Got Lee Harity. Eleven-twenty-eight Raleigh Drive, Lewisville. Take all the time you need, Mr. Harity.
When you're eighty-eight, then you just make it. Mayor? Council? We have a short-term next door, or at least they applied for it. We live eleven-twenty-eight Raleigh, and it's eleven-twenty-four. I never heard of a short-term rental. And so I've done some listening and talking to people, but I've noticed a number of things there. They've been working on their house. On that house, they paid, they must have paid the former owner, they've been working four or five months on that house. What are they doing? I don't know. They getting it ready for the next buyer? I don't know. I'll tell you one thing. Lewisville is perfect for nefarious goings-on, if they wanted to have it. So I thought to myself, well, I'm not gonna argue the point, short-term, I'm against it. But let's say what if? Lewisville is perfect. It's one, our, this, our street is one mile away from I-35. If there were people planning on traveling from Mexico to Canada, they could. I'm not saying that the person next door is that, I'm saying it's a possibility. I would pick, if I were picking a place, a perfect place to have a short-term rental to use for some other purpose, I would pick my street. We're one block away from the First Baptist Church. That looks good. We have all sorts of things there. We have a major intersection here, and we are there, we're in position. It's perfect. I would pick a place where there's a lot of good residents. We have wonderful, wonderful neighbors, and I consider everyone a neighbor. Everyone's a neighbor. A short-term person is coming to be a neighbor. I'm more than welcome. I'll preach to them if I have to. But the fact is, that's not the point. The point is, we have wonderful neighbors. My wife and I are both eighty-eight, excuse me, sorry, ma'am. And we're in the last throes of this earthly travail. And I would like to see the next generation safe. So I wouldn't pick one mile away from a major thoroughfare, and I would pick a residential area near a church. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harity. Ms. Harity, please give him a pass. Ainsley Stelling, one-thousand-one Forest Park Drive, Lewisville, Texas.
Good evening. I have handouts, which I think you've already passed out, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ainsley Stelling, I live at one-thousand-one Forest Park Drive. First and foremost, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Powell. Ms. Trump, again. I know there's been a lot of hard work that has gone into this subject, and it's evident you've heard our concerns over the last several months and are trying to address this issue. Short-term rental operation in residential areas is a polarizing topic, and it can bring out the good, the bad, and the indifferent, and many kinds of people. So thank you for attacking this issue head-on. The handout I had passed out is a summary of the requested changes the Texas Neighborhood Coalition Lewisville Chapter would like to see to the proposed regulations. These topics are gonna be spread out amongst several speakers tonight to reduce topic redundancy and to be more time-efficient. We are a hundred percent in support of the temporary ban of short-term rentals in Lewisville for one year, with the request that it take effect as soon as possible. Additionally, we ask that permitting window close sixty to ninety days after effective date. This would allow ample time for existing rentals to get an approved permit without dragging out city resources during the study period. In regard to occupancy, in order to lessen burden on code inspectors and simplify verbiage, we ask that occupancy be restricted to two people per legal bedroom. And I say "legal", in that I know of a few rentals that have converted garages to bedrooms to drive up occupancy. We know this isn't safe or legal per city code, Chapter Four, Article Six, Division Six, Section Four, two-twenty-two. Residents also request the ability to report occupancy limit violations when the total number of persons seen on-site at any given time is over permitted capacity. The Arlington STR has, the STR ordinance has this identical statement in their verbiage. So I didn't just pull this out of thin air. Next, parking. New Braunfels requires a diagram of legal off-street parking to be submitted with the permitted application. If the property does not have the requisite off-street parking for occupants they are requesting, then the approved occupancy limit should be based off the number of off-street parking spots. For example, if the home has four bedrooms, but only three off-street parking spots, then the occupancy should be restricted to six people. This would put off-street parking in line with other non-residential parking requirements outlined in Subpart Three, Section Eight, One, Four, which states that one parking space is required per two beds. Since these hotels, as defined by the state of Texas, are operating in residential neighborhoods, then it only makes sense to have them abide by non-residential parking requirements. Residents should not be additionally burdened with parking permits when we did not invite or approve rental operations in our neighborhood. On the topic of liability insurance, we request that the minimum amount of insurance provided be $2 million. I ask this because there are homes in my neighborhood that are quickly approaching the $1 million sales range. If one of the STRs in my block should self-combust for some spontaneous reason, $1 million would only be enough to rebuild that single property, and there would not be any or much left over to address adjacent houses that could have been damaged in the blow. I want to ensure that any neighbors of any STRs are protected. I know this is all covered by another person, but I also just want to say that as a former prison wife, our court system is already drastically overburdened with current workload, and I do not feel it is fair to the system or to residents that a conviction be the only method for permit revocation. If the permit approval and appeals process can be handled in a timely fashion by city staff, then residents are confident that our current citation process is enough to justify permit revocation if two citations occur within a twelve-month period. Let's keep our court system docket open for more serious crimes. We do not feel any of our requests are unfounded or unreasonable and realize we are at yet another milestone in this journey. Myself and others are at your disposal for any assistance or feedback we can provide. There's still much work ahead, so thank you for your time.
Ms. Stelling, I have a question for you real quick. So I wanted to make sure you understood. Are you opposed to the parking altogether, or are you just saying, it's okay, but it doesn't go far enough? Can you clarify your position on that, please?
I'm opposed to the proposition that we have to come together as a neighborhood, and we also have to take on permits? Because like Ms. Beckner said, it feels like you're going against the residents because we have a short-term rental in our neighborhood. Why should we be burdened with the on-street parking permits when that burden should be on the STR property?
So just for absolute clarity, just to make sure I understand. So if we go back and we decide for any number of reasons, sometimes what's logical and what's legal, the Venn diagram is not a circle, unfortunately?
No, absolutely.
So if we go back and we decide this is not something that we can do, you would still support striking the whole parking part out of this ordinance? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question as well. You mentioned that the state of Texas is...
You mentioned that the state of Texas has defined an STR as a hotel. Can you, can you expand on that?
Yes, per their tax code. Yes, I have provided that support in previous presentations.
Okay. Can we, can we expand on that? We need some clarification on that.
It's, it's for purposes of the tax code, these are, these are hotels, but they are not hotels by Texas state law. I, I think that, I don't know if that's legal advice. I think we're just asking, if, if the statement is that they are hotels by the state, that's, where, where to understand that that's incorrect?
Right. Per the Texas tax code, they're hotels.
Right, for, for the purposes of tax collection.
Yes, yes.
But that does not mean that they're a hotel.
That's the verbiage in that. It's limited to that because it says "for the purpose of this." But in the other area...
But that, yeah, that does not mean that they're a hotel.
That it discusses, I don't know the code number.
Back to Patrick's Venn diagram of logic and legal.
Yeah.
That's our understanding of it. I, I, we, we know where the code is, but I think the, the, the issue there is, it's only for the purposes of taxes.
Yes.
Then it's, so it's, it's not, the state doesn't define them as a hotel.
No.
They define them as...
As a tax, as a, as a tax purpose, it's a hotel.
Okay, cool. Then I think we're all, we're all clear there.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next, I have Song Wu, 1713 Shady Creek, Louisville. Does not wish to speak, but is, you're in support of STRs, or are you in support of the ordinances, or?
Yeah, I'm supporting the STR. I would say, I would emphasize, the whole audience should be...
If, if you want to expand on that, I'm going to need you to come down, Mr. Wu. I apologize.
Yeah, my position is if this audience should apply to every properties, regardless of STR or regular residents. See, if you complain that STR has parties, then the regular residents also have parties, especially in the past, last week, this party almost in every house, and there's a crowd overpacked in the street. And also, the visitors, is also a stranger come to visit each other. So I, I would say if this regulation should apply to everyone.
So if we have a regulation, needs to apply to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Wu. I'm sorry. Mr. Wu over here. Here we are. So, yeah, so thank you. So do you, can you, I didn't get your address, your residence.
1713 Shady Creek.
That's my, I have an STR.
Shady Creek, okay. And that's your STR, is that your residence?
Uh, STR.
So is your residence also in Louisville?
I'm, I'm in Plano, Texas.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. David Margulis, 1120 King Mark, King Mark Drive, Louisville.
Thank you. First, I wanted to frame this, if you don't mind, with a quote from an esteemed elected official who said, "The biggest and best way we can make sure that Louisville is safe and a prosperous city is to get out and know our neighbors, because crime does not thrive in a community that knows its neighbors." That was Mayor Gilmore in his last report to the public. So as you frame this issue, let's understand that if you have STRs in your neighborhood, you don't know your neighbors. It's the very antithesis of what you're talking about with keeping your community safe. The other way to frame this issue is, what would you do if the STR was next door to your house? And the ordinance, as good as it is, and we're really excited that you're taking steps to work on this, doesn't go far enough. The idea that you have to have convictions, you can be tied up in court forever. If you have an administrative process, you can appeal to a court, but that would be a much cleaner and much better way to approach that. STRs, according to your own staff, have not been paying the hotel occupancy tax. I think five out of 93 was the last count. That's your own staff's reporting, and they did a great job. In my book, that's a scofflaw. So I wouldn't put a lot of stock in the idea that suddenly these people who have been collecting this money and not paying a tax, it's, well, you can just Google it, it's not like it's hard to find, are suddenly going to become good citizens just because you passed an ordinance. You're going to need to regulate it more, and I think that's really important. The manager has explained you can't do it retroactively, which is unfortunate, but you certainly can make sure that not only that they're paying the tax, but that they're audited, so that you can make sure that they actually are paying the tax, and you're collecting the tax dollars you need to support this ordinance. And finally, I always tell my clients to listen to your attorney, even if you don't like what they're telling you. However, not all attorneys agree with each other. And our attorney who represents our organization, who is a very highly regarded former corporate counsel, and as I've been told, that's not a city attorney, has made it clear that the Arlington ordinance was non-suited because the appellate court told the plaintiffs that they were going to lose, that they, they were trying to get a TRO, and that they were not likely to get to win. You don't get a TRO if you don't, you don't have an issue that they think you have a chance of prevailing on. It's a pretty low standard, as I understand it, and I'm not an attorney. So the fact is, the ordinance was not, it's not that it didn't pass legal muster. The fact of the matter is that the people who were opposing it gave up when they thought they were going to lose. So I'm not suggesting you adopt every part of the Arlington ordinance, but there are lots of parts of that ordinance that make a lot of sense. No parties. You have to have enough parking on your property, things like that. All of those would go a long way to helping people as you look at this problem long-term. And so we appreciate the work that you've done already, the staff and the council, but let's look at this as if they're going to be next door to your house. Your grandkids are coming over there, if you have grandkids. You're worried about coming home and not finding a place to park, those types of things. Whether you would want a specific parking proposal that's in this ordinance, there are certainly communities that have resident parking, where you get a permanent sticker for your car, and workers can park in your driveway. There are ways to make that better. But the fact is, the way it is now, it is a burden on the people who live there and not on the people who are turning their homes into hotels. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Any questions? Patrick's heard enough for me.
Thank you, sir. And my apologies, Kwaklau. Not wishing to speak, but are you in support of STRs? Are you in support of the ordinances?
I wish to speak. I wish to speak.
You, come on up. 1401 Wellesley Drive, Louisville, Texas.
Mr. Mayor and City, thank you very much for your time. We heard many reasons about the bad thing STR can bring to the city. Crime, strangers, party, parking lot. Obviously, nobody want to mention the good points of STR can bring to the community charade. Anyone here can shut and fire quickly. I would like to compare STR or short-term rental compared to long-term rental, because whoever want to make a property and invest into it, either they have to choose between short-term rental or long-term rental. There's no other third way to do so. For, for short-term, sorry, for long-term rental, as long as we sign the lease and the tenants pay the rent, they have one called tenant rights. We cannot jump into the house. We cannot inspect. Nothing, not much we can do as long as they pay the rent. And many times, I call the police on my, myself. I live in Louisville. I value the, the community value and my property as well. When I open the door, I smell marijuana in the house, and I call the police, say, "Hey, these tenants in my house, they, they smoke marijuana. Is there any way you can help?" He say, "No, as long as it's rental house, we cannot step in, as long as I know." For, we, we have a, we have a, our STR house, our Airbnb house in Louisville, first by coincidence, we, we plan to, you know, just make it beautiful again and sell it. And because we, we so in love with the house, we want to keep it. And this, what I see as the, an owner, for a short-term rental, the owner has reputations. They have reviews, and they have to keep it so that their business can, can run. It's not like long-term rental, you know, they can be, someone can be a bad tenant, and someone can be a very bad landlord as well. Short-term rental, the guests always look at the review before they, they book the room. So we did a lot of thing to keep the property into the best condition of it could be, to keep and maintain our reputations. Next door, my next door is a long-term rental. So this is my case. We have a long-term rental and a short-term rental next door. I, during the time I worked on my project, I found out that's my tenant, my neighbor is a long-term rental tenant. He built a private landfill in the backyard. I say a landfill, you can go back into the fire department and check the record, I called the department twice, and address the fire hazard because it's overhead landfill with all the trash in there. And I opened the door for the chief of firemen by department into my house, so he can see and witness what happened to that house, and it's a long-term rental. We have 93 last month and down to 90 short-term rental this month, but we didn't know, I shut very quick shut, we have 463 long-term rental in the city. And, you know, we don't have a very clear regulation that part, but we, we have a very clear regulations for chicken, how we can keep chicken in our house, and of course, we are working a regulation how to got the STR running in the city. So, and this is how the city, this is how civilization grow. We have something new, we don't walk away from it, we, we make regulations. And we have to, you know, cut out the bad, the bad apple, you know, and keep the good brains grow. I believe between short-term rental and long-term rental, short-term rental have a very good benefit, and the landlord have more power to control the quality and contribute back to the community more than long-term rentals. And with us, I, I wish the, the council make a good decision on the new regulations, and I support the, the new ordinance for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, that's the last of the public comment cards that I have. We have a couple of, I, I saw a hand here. I got two hands. Anyone give me a three-hand? I, I'm okay with opening it up for two more public speakers for comments. I, I'd be happy to do that. If, I've got you, sir, in the hat, and I've got the gentleman back here in the, in the blue. So, in the hat, sir, if you wouldn't mind coming up, stating your name and address for the record, and this man, right here? Yeah, absolutely. Well, I thought you had filled out a card to not speak. That's fair. Well, hold on. If I do that, then everybody who put a card not to speak gets to change their mind. That's going to create a challenge for me, so I think I'm going to have to hold off on that. Yes, sir?
Evening.
Name and address for the record.
My name's Brian Swanson.
Thank you.
I own an STR here in Louisville. I'm on the side of, it brings the community together. A lot of our neighbors help us with the STR. We have a lot of good things that happen, and if we're, if we're to, I just came back from New Orleans, so I, I honestly, there's more strangers there than I can think of. And I take my kids there ever since they were eight, like, they're eight years old now, and they've been growing up, going to New Orleans. So everybody's a stranger to them. So the stranger thing, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's like, the, the more we progress as a society, I, I feel like we, we shouldn't be afraid of strangers. I understand, like, there's security aspects there. I just think that's a kind of a cop-out for, for certain things. And, you know, look at New York, look at, look at New Orleans. I mean, there's plenty of places where there's tons of people that you don't know, and, I don't know, for, we, we grew up with nothing, my wife and I, and we strive to build wealth in this way. And then when we see stuff like this that, like, kind of strips away our bottom dollar, we're thinking to ourselves like, well, great, now we got to sell it, you know, like, or we got to do something else. And that's tough, because we, we did, we were servers, you know, like, we came from nothing. And now, my wife's a real estate agent, and I own a construction company. Like, we worked really hard to get here, and I understand the certain concerns, but at the end of the day, when the, the hundreds of dollars that go into, like, regulation here, regulation there, it strips our bottom dollar, and then we don't have the things that we need. And I agree with the gentleman that just spoke before me. It's like, there's a lot of good aspects to STRs, and we own a long-term rental too. So I, I think the STR version is a much better version than long-term, because, yes, you don't get that, like, constant upkeep of the property. And STRs, I think they bring a lot more value to the community, because your next-door neighbor doesn't have to worry about the house going down in value. So, I mean, I'll yield at that, but I think that STRs are a great benefit to our community, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions, real quick, before we go off.
Yeah.
So you have one STR, one long-term rental?
Mm-hmm.
Have they both in Louisville?
Oh, one's in Denton, and then our STR is in Louisville.
And your primary residence is?
Crump. We just moved to Crump, from the Louisville location.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Sir? And if you could give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Hughes. I live at 1018 Forest Park. And I just want to say, I'm against STRs generally, but, and I, but I support the, the ordinance, and I appreciate your work on doing that. But I have a question, though, kind of about, about the parking issue. I see it, from where I'm, where I live, my driveway is on Clearview Court, but my address is on Forest Park Drive. On Clear, on Clearview Court, there are 11 houses. Three of those are short-term rentals. Well, 75% of 11 is 8.25. Do you see that as eight or nine? In order to get the 75%? And this could happen in many neighborhoods, and I'm just curious, from where I sit, I go out my driveway, and I have a lot of STR cars all parked around my cul-de-sac. It affects me a lot, you know, the parking issue affects me a lot. So I'm just curious where I stand, and do I vote, do I sign the deal with Forest Park, or do I sign with Clearview Court, if that came up?
I believe Richard has, so we had the conversation. Is your house one of the ones that has the driveway on, but you front?
I front Forest Park, and my driveway is on Clearview Court.
It's typically looked at, regardless of the address, it's the property frontage. So if you've got two frontages, then you, you really are fronting on two different blocks. So you have to look at whichever block is being looked at on both sides of the street.
So he would count towards, so you would be able to vote?
Either, either street?
So he'd get to vote twice.
You'd get to vote twice.
He'd vote twice.
Based on his frontage.
I was just curious how that worked. Because as it is, the STR is on Clearview Court, and, and so how do you see the 8.25? You didn't answer my question there.
So it's a full city block?
75% of 11 is 8.25.
But it's a full city block.
And there's only eight that are non-STR houses. They could never, if the STRs don't, don't vote for it, it doesn't affect them anyway. They'll never have parking, correct?
So it's, it's based, it's based on a full city block, sir? So it's not just the street? It would be the block that is adjacent? So it, it could expand beyond just the cul-de-sac?
I know, but Clearview Court is a whole street, and then Forest Park tees into it. So would, that would Clearview Court be the block that would be voting, or would, or would some of?
Richard, do we have, did we have a, did we try that one?
Forest Park. I'm just curious. I'm just curious. I'm just curious, I'm just curious, you know?
The entire block of Clearview Court has thirteen adjacent properties that front the street on both sides. So that is the total you would start with.
So that's the number of homes? So seventy-five percent of that, of thirteen?
So seventy-five of thirteen, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. That concludes the, um, public input session. Counsel, we're going to go ahead and open that to your conversation feedback for city staff.
I'll, I'll jump in here and I just want to say I really appreciate, one, everybody coming out, this is, we've done this for a while, so both sides coming out, getting here, all kinds of input, this has helped me tremendously. But I also want to thank the staff, our city staff, for doing a fantastic job. I know that there's been many long hours, you know, I sat with our city attorney and, and city manager for a couple hours, going through case after case, then trying to dumb it down for me to understand what was going on, did a fantastic job. And I know there's been a lot of long hours put into this, I really appreciate all the help and the, uh, the dedication that staff has had to this process. Thank you so much.
Counselor McGreen? I might as well just go down the line. If, if Patrick's going to start, we can just keep working our way across.
Okay, um, well, I, I want to say, um, you know, ditto to what Councilman Kelly just said. I, I do have a few thoughts about, um, some questions and thoughts, uh, because I know one thing that's come up in the past has been about people parking trailers and things on the street. That's illegal, um, per our, the ordinances that we have in place right now, correct? Can't park a trailer on the, it has to be loading, right?
That's correct.
So, you know, our current ordinances don't allow trailers or the campers, um, or boats to be parked on the street. So if that is happening on your block, that is already prohibited by our ordinance. Just wanted to clarify that in case, um, in case you didn't know that. So there, there was something that was mentioned, um, that I thought was interesting and I kind of liked, that I, um, wanted to mention to staff. I, I do like the idea of having the, the immediate revocation, um, if there's an egregious violation, such as a shooting or, um, prostitution or, you know, we've heard some of the things that have happened in Plano. So I, I actually like, I like that suggestion. I am having a bit of an issue or a bit of a, um, I, I'm not quite sure how I feel about the temporary ban. One, I'm not quite sure what that's going to do to help anyone that has currently got an SDR situation. The temporary ban is not going to prevent those SDRs from being able to operate. But I, it kind of feels like we're, I, I would rather give people the opportunity to follow the regulations and do it right than to say, we're going to say that you can't do it, um, for a year, even if it's a, I don't, I honestly, I know we talked about it, um, in a way that we wanted to see how, let's get some regulations in place and figure out from there, um, what's working, what's not working. Um, and that a, a temporary ban made sense. However, I mean, I really feel like with, with what we've got right now, I, I feel like it addresses so many of the issues that have been brought to the council, um, understanding that there's no perfect solution here. And I know parking is probably going to be one of those issues that, you know, we're going to maybe need to keep talking about over the next year. But I'm just not sure that I'm seeing a reason that we need to do a temporary ban on short-term rentals in the meantime, um, because we, we have the tools in place to address the bad actors, um, with this ordinance, in my opinion. That's all my thoughts for now.
So I'm going to slightly disagree with, uh, Councilwoman Green, which is very rare. But, uh, I, I do think we need to, uh, think about this temporary ban to give us time to get our ordinance up to speed and to see what works and see what doesn't work. I think we need to do something to, 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 to keep, to, to satisfy our, our residents, but also to allow ourselves the time to get where, where we need to go. I will say this also, for the residents who had questions about parking, you know, you're here today to kind of protect your neighborhood. The parking is optional and we made it, we made it so city-wide so that everyone, you can either opt-in or opt-out by the seventy-five percent vote. That is completely up to you. Because that gives our police department something to cite. You know, because people, everybody's come and said people parking, you know, if they're parking in front of your mailbox, you can call, you can call the non-emergency number, they'll get out there and they'll give them, give them a ticket. But if we have police roaming and they don't have those permits, they can give them a ticket that starts down the citation pass for these bad actors. What we want is the good, are the, the good companies and we know, and we've heard from people who are against the SDRs, who, they, they know there are some good actors out there. We want to promote that, we want to promote good behavior and we want to discourage as much as we can the bad behavior that we've seen and we've heard from our, from our residents, you know, over the last few months. So, and I, I talked to, I talked to our neighbors and I said, we're not going to have the perfect ordinance, but we're going to do something. Doing nothing is not an option. And I think this is one of the first steps in doing something. Uh, we're not trying to keep anybody from, you know, running their, their SDR in, 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 within the rules, but we have to set the rules, we have to set some, some guardrails up. If we don't have guardrails, then we're going to continue down this perpetual road where we have more people coming in and we don't know who's good, who's bad. Let's just, let's, let's set the rules and, and, and let's, and let's go. That's all I have here.
Counselor McCain?
Uh, yeah, um, I happen to agree with, uh, Councilwoman Green on the temporary ban. I don't see a, a need for a temporary ban because it's not going to be temporary. We're talking about a ban for twelve months. When we first started discussing a ban, it was until we get the ordinance. This is a pretty good ordinance. And it can be changed at any time and added to. I can see a ban until it's voted on. But once the ordinance is in place, because they're going to, they're going to operate regardless, you're just going to have them operating under the table. And, and we don't want that. We want to encourage everybody to, to get their permit. I have a question on, um, just a second. I was scratching down as y'all were, and I can't even read my own writing now, just a second. The party venue advertising, all the platforms that I know of that I've been on, but there are so many now, they already ban party houses. And if they find out that you're using their pa, platform to promote, uh, venue and, and parties, you are banned lifetime from that particular platform. So I don't, they keep saying that, but we, we have more problems with parties of owner, owners that live there, residents that live there in long-term rentals. You can have a party at your house, but if it becomes one of those parties, you're going to be held liable. And this, I've got a question as regarding require a permit to advertise. How do we require a permit to advertise if you can advertise things by right? Now, on the advertisement, it should be required to have our regulations and the permit number on there, but how do we require a permit to advertise?
Well, so if there, if someone posts online and we can?
On a platform?
On a platform.
Okay.
And we see that it's posted and we don't have a corresponding permit?
Right, okay.
It's a violation.
All right. Just bear with me for a minute. Inspections is lined out in the ordinance that is proposed? I, I would, y'all are going to have to, this parking issue, it's a, it's, street parking and neighborhood parking is an issue without an SDR. It is, I don't know, chief, how many calls y'all get on it? I see it on social media all the time, so-and-so down the streets parking four houses down in front of my, in front of my house, how dare they park in front of my house? It's a public street and by law, you have a right to park on a public street. So in order not to violate somebody's right is the reason we were doing the voluntary, uh, street parking to give that neighborhood an opt-in. But there are certain ordinances in place now that take care of a lot of parking issues, and they don't have to, it's not an SDR issue. Now, mind you, there are some SDRs that we have that do not see a problem having ten, eleven, twelve cars. I was told by one owner that, um, and, and I quickly told him it was wrong. But, um, because it is an issue. But if the cars are parking the wrong way, I don't care who they are, call in. If they're parking, blocking your driveway, call in. If they're parking, blocking your, and this gets me, your mailbox, call in. If they're there longer than forty-eight hours, call. Because those are violations not only of our ordinance, but of state law. So those are already, already on the books. What we're trying to figure out how to do is to make sure everyone's rights are heard and are kept. Because we cannot take away somebody else. You know, the old saying is, well, their rights stop where it infringes on my rights. The same is the reverse. The same is the reverse of that. And so we had to be very careful and we're treading a, a thin line on this. We really are. We're, we're reaching out there, I think we've done it pretty quick. Most cities have taken two, two and a half, three years to do this. And when it has come to light. And, um, and, and I give kudos to our staff. God knows that you've had dragons, you know, breathing down your, your back and, uh, you've done an excellent job. Um, and you still have to put up with us yelling in the back in executive session because we don't agree with what interpretations of this, that and the other are. But that's something that we're going to have to work out. So I'm going to ask you to bear with us about another month or so. But, um, we're getting there. And every, every SDR owner that I have talked to, minus one, I will tell you, there's been a minus one, uh, are in favor of ordinances and regulations because you know what? It protects them and it weeds out the bad actors. And they want that as bad as everybody wants that.
Thank you. Counselor Mottori?
My asthma's acting up, so I can't really talk very much. But most of what I, most of what has been said, I agree with. I'm debating the temporary ban, um, but regulation is necessary and the regulations, whatever we come up with, have to apply to everybody. So we can't, we can't do, you know, we can't have regulations targeting specific or SDR specific regulations, um, that don't apply to other people, that don't apply to long-term or residents. So.
Thank you, counsel. Couple of things, uh, city manager, uh, I like the concept of platform accountability and I got to figure out how we do that because quite frankly, that's how all of these platforms operate. And it's not just, it's not just SDRs, it's, it's your Lyft and Uber and all that stuff. I, I thought it was interesting, we, we, we had strangers talking about strangers, right? You know, when I was a kid, I was told, you know, you, you don't talk to people on the internet and, and you definitely don't get into some stranger's car. And now I use the internet to get into some stranger's car and I do it pretty regularly. So it's, it's interesting how things have changed over time. But, um, the, if there are some angles on platform accountability, I'd, I'd love that because I think they need to be a partner in this because they're creating, you're creating some of it. The back taxes conversation, I think is an appropriate one. If, if you owe the city money, you, you got to get right, um, before we, we, we give you a permit. If I owe, if I owe the city library money, which I can't do anymore, but if I did owe the city library money, I couldn't run for office. So that, I, I, I feel like that's, that's a, an appropriate angle we need to, we need to spend some time on. On parking, uh, my personal pet peeve is folks that park backwards, so. And then the other folks that park head in on cul-de-sacs, y'all know who you are, stop it. But, um, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that occupancy limits will help with some of the parking issues. Uh, I think those two are absolutely connected, so I'd like to continue to, to move down that path. I, I do also want to continue to at least give the, the neighborhood the option. If they want to make things more restrictive than state law allows, um, then I think, I think that's a great thing. I think if a neighborhood wants to go to that step, they, they have that option to, to crank it down. It's very difficult for our police to enforce where there is not a permit. There, there is no way for them to go walk through all the cars in the neighborhood and go, this one, this one belongs to the neighbor, this one belongs to, uh, an SDR. That is a very, very difficult thing for one of our officers to do. And do we want our officers walking around the neighborhood, checking and knocking on doors to see who owns what car where? Or do we want them out there helping people who've had a traffic accident on thirty-five? Helping people that are, are having an issue? So that's, that's the balancing act I have to deal with on, on the resources. If there's a better solution or somebody has a, a different idea that, I'm happy to listen to it, I'd, I'd be interested. But right now, that's, of, of this school of tools that we have, this is another tool in the toolbox. You may choose not to use it, uh, but it's definitely a tool that we could offer to neighborhoods, should they choose to. If they don't, then it's not a burden on them. But I agree, it is, it is burdensome to a neighborhood, especially if you have a lot of cars. And there was a time when I had three kids in high school, um, all of driving age, and for some strange reason, they all needed the car exactly at the same time. So I was that guy with multiple cars floating around in the neighborhood for a few years. So I get it, it's, it's, it's a challenge and it does put a burden on the neighborhood, but that's, that's the conversation that we've, uh, that I have in my head. If I can give a neighborhood an extra tool, I'm, I'm happy to do it. If the neighborhood doesn't want it, then that's fine. It's, it's there, it's available, they don't have to use it. But if you have another idea on parking, that's great. Again, occupancy, I think, maybe touches on that. Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to say something. Your quote regarding, uh, getting to know your neigh, your neighbor.
Oh, well, you know?
Okay.
Your neighbor could be an owner.
That's right. That's right. It could be the owner of the SDR and a neighbor could be a temporary neighbor of somebody that's staying there and you don't know their circumstances. It could be a pastor. It could be the owner of Fortune 500 company looking at Lewisville to expand their business. Talk to them, get to know them. How else are you going to know who's staying there? And I think that's a wonderful thing. Thank you for that.
I appreciate it. I think that's, unless there are other comments, we'll go ahead and shut down public comment. Or unless city manager, do you need an additional direction?
Let me clarify what I think is being said to me. So I believe you want us to come back with further exploration of these topics.
Think there's, yeah, a couple of ideas where we want to, we want to drill down on a bit more. We've got parking, we've got, um, platform, um, accountability, uh, we've got back taxes.
Immediate revocation for egregious infractions?
Immediate revocation. Any others? The ba, the ban is debatable as well. And of course, we don't have, uh, Councilmember Meredith's input on this at this point.
So we'll keep the ban on the table right now, but for, for future discussion?
Agreed.
Is that right? Okay. Okay, I think I've got it.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't have any, any action to take tonight. This was all just intended to be gathering information so that we could refine our first pass. So y'all have been absolutely instrumental and involved in the legislative process for our city, so I thank you for that. That is, that is awesome, it's commendable and, and it's important, it's how government should, should operate. You know, we sit up here and, and we're, we're your neighbors. Every one of us is. Every one of us is your neighbors. This is not a big, high-paying job. We do this to give back to the community. So your input is absolutely vital to make sure that we are, are hearing what the community needs and where it needs us to, to help direct. By the same token, we're also stewards. And so we have to balance that with, you know, what are the legal ramifications? And none of us are attorneys up here, although we may play one on TV. None, none of us council members, none of us council members are attorneys up here. We may play them on TV, but we are not them. And so we have to, we have to make sure that we, we vet that. So I appreciate the feedback and the input. City manager, city attorney, do we have any closed session?
No.
We do not? As there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. Eight oh six.